Good evening, councilors. It is six thirty P M. I will call the Tuesday, April sixteenth, meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk please call the roll.
President Ladine, Counselor Van Sickle, Counselor Moffett, Counselor Sweeney, Abseth, Counselor Fantasy, Counselor Elm, Counselor Ludwig, Counselor Herrick, Counselor Johnson, and Vice President Grasky.
I will now ask the clerk to administer the oath of office for our newly elected officials. So if councilors Ladine, Moffett, Fantasy, Ludwig, and Johnson could please come down in front of the rotunda here.
All right, First District Nicholas Ladine, for Third District Garner Moffett, for Fifth District Brent Fantasy, for Seventh District Ruth Ludwig, and for Ninth District Mark Johnson. Having been elected as an elder person for the Common Council of the City of Superior, Douglas County, Wisconsin, please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take your oath of office. I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, I will faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the Common Council to the best of my ability. So help me God.
Congratulations, councilors, on your reelections.
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 As you are taking your seats, I will, our next item will be the selection of the council president for the twenty twenty-four year. I'll ask the city attorney to explain the process for selecting our council president and vice president.
Good evening, and congratulations. By statute, this is your reorganization meeting, and you're charged with selecting leadership from amongst your group. We will start with the selection of your council president, and to nominate, it's simply state of voice. We'll field a second to that nomination, and that'll be a candidate, and we can do that as many times as we want, have as many nominees as we want. We'll invite each candidate to address the council for three minutes, at which time we will do a roll call vote simply by stating the name of your preferred candidate for the position. If more than two are nominated and no candidate receives six votes, six votes is the goal, we'll have the top two candidates go to a final vote. There are scenarios where there can be more than two nominated but no top two vote-getters, and this instance, I suppose everyone could be nominated for president, and each person, or rather, three people could be nominated for president, and each person could get three votes. I think that's highly unlikely, but that's obviously a scenario where you don't have, not only do you not have a candidate getting six votes, but you wouldn't have even a leading candidate of that in that scenario. We'll deal with that when we get to it, if we get to it. Not likely to be a tie with nine of you here tonight, so that's not something we'll probably have to deal with. So with no further instructions, unless anyone has any questions that I can clarify, by the way, we'll repeat the process for the selection of your vice president. But if you have no other questions for me at this time, the field is open for nominating a candidate. Again, this is for council president.
Floor is open. Are there any nominations for council president?
Nominate Council Grasky.
There's a nomination for Council Grasky with a second. Are there any other nominations for council president? Are there any other nominations for council president? Counselor Grasky, you have three minutes to address the council.
Okay, well, I'll keep it short and light because nobody needs to see my face be completely beet red for three minutes, but first and foremost, District ten, thank you so much for your support over three years, entering fourth year here. Obviously, the trust of this council and this leadership position, I thank you very much. And personally, there's a lot happening in District ten that I hope that this council can listen and be a part of that process, and really start supporting some of the things that'll start affecting the whole city, so I look forward to this year and us getting to it. So thank you all very much.
Nominations are closed, and Counselor Grasky is unopposed for president. I will therefore entertain a motion to formally close nominations and approve the selection of Counselor Grasky as council president. Is there objection to that question? Here none. All those in favor of electing Counselor Grasky, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Congratulations, Madam President. The floor is now open for nominations for council vice president. Counselor Grasky.
I'd like to nominate Ruth Ludwig for vice president.
There's a nomination, a second for Counselor Ruth Ludwig for vice president. Are there, she is nominated. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Counselor Ludwig, you have three minutes to address the council.
I too will make it short and sweet. Thank you to my District seven residents for their faith in me and voting for me. I believe this is my fifth round being on the council, so thank you. Those of you who have worked with me on this council in the past know how passionate I am about the environment, mainly our parks, our gardens, our municipal forests, and how those green and blooming spaces tie into the quality of life in our community. Because I know Lindsay's passion for the cultural arts, another area that leads to improve quality of life in our community. Recently, I've been throwing a few ideas her way on how to incorporate the cultural arts into our parks and gardens. As a leadership team working together, I believe we can meld our two passions together to lead our community into creating even more attractive, interesting, and educational green spaces to increase our quality of life in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ludwig is also unopposed, so unless there's objection, I will put the question to the council on the election of Counselor Ludwig. Therefore, all those in favor of electing Counselor Ludwig, Vice President of the council, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Congratulations, Madam Vice President. And I should say, while it's tough to track, we don't keep good track of who all our vice presidents were in the history of the city, I think that this is the first time we've had the leadership entirely occupied by women, so congratulations to both of you. We can move on to the agenda.
Item three point one is the public hearing to request comments on the twenty twenty-three consolidated annual performance and evaluation report.
Is there objection to opening the public hearing? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Congratulations, Madam Vice President. And I should say, while it's tough to track, we don't keep good track of who all our vice presidents were in the history of the city, I think that this is the first time we've had the leadership entirely occupied by women, so congratulations to both of you. We can move on to the agenda.
Item three point one is the public hearing to request comments on the twenty twenty-three consolidated annual performance and evaluation report.
Is there objection to opening the public hearing? Hearing none. The public hearing for the caper is now open. Would anybody like to speak in this public hearing? This is specifically about the consolidated annual performance and evaluation report. Would anybody like to speak in the public hearing? Would anybody like to speak to the caper public hearing? Hearing none. I don't believe there's a resolution for this, right? I don't see one for the report. Then, the public hearing is now closed.
Item four point one is the approval of the April third, twenty twenty-four, regular council meeting minutes.
Motion is by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Johnson. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item seven point two is the business of the Public Works Committee with a meeting held on April fourth. Is there a report from the chair?
Actually, the mayor's report first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I actually do have a little bit of something here tonight. The first, councilors, I want to invite you all to Homegrown Soup Night coming up, the four-hour next council meeting. That will be Thursday, May second. That's where all of Homegrown sort of centers on Superior. We have a mayor's reception at five thirty P M. that night at the Cedar Lounge, or the Festival Grounds. But there will be performances all over Superior, so I encourage you to check that out and try to have us fairly well represented out there and show that the concerts on this side of the bridge are just a little bit more popular. And in terms of business, I don't know, did they get the memo for committees? Okay, so you will have all received the memo by now from the clerk describing your committee preferences. Please rank them all. Of course, you see them separated. This has been the source of a great deal of confusion among members of the leadership in the past few years. Quite simply, the five committees you see up top are the standing committees that the president and vice president will be appointing, subject to your confirmation. More or less, everything below that are seats reserved for councilors, or that could have councilors or city officials on them, and are generally appointed by the mayor. Those rules are not universal to all of them, but generally speaking, that's how they're going to work. There's a lot that has to be filled there. So my advice is if something's important to you, just say it. There may be somewhere it's not even really, there really aren't any openings, like technically, right now, there are no openings on the Superior Housing Authority, but there will be some in the near future. So if something's important to you, it is still important for me to know about that. And for members of the leadership, what time did we want these back?
By next week.
So end of the day, Tuesday next week, please submit these to either the clerk's office or directly to President Grasky or Vice President Ludwig, so that they can begin assembling these, so that we can get these approved at the next meeting. The other thing I would say is all of the other committees, commissions, boards, that I appoint, including many that don't have council representation, I've been striving over the last few months to consolidate those to this upcoming meeting. I want to make all of the appointments at the same time, so just to make the calendar a little easier, so we know in terms start and end, and we can take, do one big kind of communication to the public that says, hey, if you want to serve in local government in some capacity, we could use you. I want to do that all at once. So my message to you is help me do that. Help me recruit folks these many committees. You can see it all in our city directory on the website, but I'm going to be making quite a few appointments. A lot of them will be reappointments, but nothing is guaranteed. So if you know folks that would like to serve in government in any capacity, just want to be involved, I'd like to know those names. If you know somebody that has a particular passion to work on one particular thing, that's been asking you to serve in a particular capacity, let me know that as well. And if folks are interested, just have them send an application. Send an email, tell you about it. You can tell me any way for them to get to us, so that we can get this done over the next three weeks. That is committees. Any questions about the committee selection process? That is my report.
Item seven point two is the business of the Public Works Committee with a meeting held on April fourth. Is there a report from the chair?
Thank you, clerk. I thought that we did an approval for the stormwater flood control program, but it's not here in the recommendations. But that could be fine and on purpose. Am I missing that?
Director Janigo.
Or would that not be on the first one?
Yeah, Director Janigo, do you know the answer to that?
Not quickly. I'm looking at the minutes right now.
Would that just not have been on the recommendations?
It looks like we approved it.
In committee.
In committee, correct. I'm wondering if that got missed, or if there was some other kind of communication error.
It's at least possible, though unlikely, it's at least possible that it didn't require council approval, but regardless, if it has to come to council, we'll get it at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, I'll just go ahead with my prepared part on that, just to front-load everybody. So for the first time in the program's history, the stormwater flood control program had a property go over ten thousand dollars for a variety of reasons, mostly just that the property itself was complicated. So E S D's Aaron Abramson printed off a report, so I just wanted to share with you a little bit about that stormwater flood control program that, you know, all of our residents, for the most part, have access to. So the program was started in two thousand eight by, I think, Counselor McKenzie at the time, and since then, we've done about five hundred and fifty of these replacements. And over those years, by district, the most have been completed in the third, the fifth, and the seventh. On average, we do about twenty-six a year, and it really ramped up after twenty twelve, where it went from three or five to almost fifty. And then there was a peak in two thousand nineteen with fifty-six. So I just wanted to share that with you guys, because I just thought it was interesting. And regarding the recommendations, the landfill had a very specialty installation that we approved. This is in preparation, again, for the landfill being nearly at capacity, so there are some gas wells going in that have always been needed and planned for. The erosion at Wisconsin Point, this item seven point two point two is a way to prepare for the nourishment, so this will create something of a buffer off the shoreline to help with that erosion. And again, you'll see the mill and overlay work in there, so that's when we rent equipment that will scrape the street down, and then it'll feel like months and months go by before we go through and lay new asphalt. That's because we rent the equipment, so it actually probably is months. And you'll see that, oh, I don't see the first item on there, so I guess I won't worry about that either. But I also wanted to just acknowledge Bill Amorti, who has run our municipal airports, in a motion to approve items seven point two point one, seven point two point two, seven point two point three, and seven point two point four.
So motion to approve all the recommendations of the Public Works Committee. Is there a second? Motion is by Counselor Van Sickle, second by Counselor Ludwig. Director Janigo.
Yes, the documentation on the stormwater flood control program requires, it just took me a minute to get there, requires approval by the Public Works Committee, does not require council approval, and likely because it's a smaller amount, so by approving at the Public Works Committee, it's approved, so it doesn't need formal council approval.
The motion is to approve all four recommendations to the Public Works Committee. And because this is an amended agenda, this isn't terribly interesting, but item seven point two point two, the submerged land lease, that relates to the item that we added at the last minute here before the meeting, which is ten point four. I'm just going to forget to explain that. There's not much to explain, but those two items are related. They're the same project, I mean. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting all four recommendations, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item seven point five is the business of the Public Safety Committee with a meeting, a special meeting held on April eleventh. Is there a report from the chair?
We'll keep it short. We had a special meeting on April eleventh to relook at the electric fire truck. There were some questions on council regarding that, so they sent it back to Public Safety. We had our questions answered. It was approved unanimously and sent back here for you guys' approval. So any questions, I'm here to answer. Chief Volbrecht is here. If not, I will motion to recommend the approval out of the Public Safety Committee.
Motion is by Counselor Ladine, second by Counselor Herrick, to approve the recommendation, which is the purchase of Rosenbauer E V fire engine in the amount of one million eight hundred and fifty-three thousand seven hundred and two dollars. I, I thought that we did an approval for the stormwater flood control program, but it's not here in the recommendations, but that could be fine and on purpose. Am I missing that?
Director Janigo.
Or would that not be on the first one?
Yeah, Director Janigo, do you know the answer to that?
Um, not quickly. I'm, I'm looking at the, at the minutes right now.
Would that just not have been on the recommendations?
It looks like we approved it.
Mm-hmm. In committee.
In committee, correct. I'm wondering if that, if that got missed, or if there was some other kind of communication error.
Okay.
It's at least possible, though unlikely, it's at least possible that it didn't require council approval, but regardless, if it has to come to council, we'll get it at the next meeting.
Okay. Well, I'll just go ahead with my prepared part on that, just to front-load everybody. So for the first time in the program's history, the stormwater flood control program had a property go over $10,000 for a variety of reasons, mostly just that the property itself was complicated. So ESD's Aaron Abramson printed off a report, so I just wanted to share with you a little bit about the, that can, that stormwater flood control program that, you know, all of our residents, for the most part, have access to. So the program was started in 2008 by, I think, Councillor McKenzie at the time, and since then, we've done about 550 of these replacements. And over, over those years, by district, the most have been completed in the third, the fifth, and the seventh. On average, we do about 26 a year, was, and it, it really ramped up after 2012, where it went from three or five to almost 50. And then there was a peak in 2019 with 56. So I just wanted to share that with you guys, because I just thought it was interesting. And regarding the recommendations, the landfill had a very specialty installation that we approved. This is in preparation, again, for the landfill being nearly at capacity, so there are some gas wells going in that have always been needed and planned for. The erosion at Wisconsin Point, this item 7.2.2 is a way to prepare for the nourishment. So this will create something of a buffer off the shoreline to help with that erosion. And again, you'll see the mill and overlay work in there, so that's when we rent equipment that will scrape the street down, and then it'll feel like months and months go by before we go through and lay new asphalt. That's because we rent the equipment, so it, it actually probably is months. And you'll see that, oh, I don't see the, the first item on there, so I guess I won't worry about that either. But I also wanted to just acknowledge Bill Amorti, who has run our municipal airports, in a motion to approve items 7.2.1, 7.2.2, 7.2.3, and 7.2.4.
So motion to approve all the recommendations of the Public Works Committee. Is there a second? Motion is by Councillor Van Seckel, second by Councillor Ludwig. Director Janigo.
Yes, the, the documentation on the stormwater flood control program requires, it just, just took me a minute to get there, requires approval by the Public Works Committee, does not require council approval, and likely because it's a, it's a smaller amount. So by approving at the Public Works Committee, it's approved, so it doesn't need formal council approval.
The motion is to approve all four recommendations to the Public Works Committee. And I, because this is an amended agenda, this, this isn't terribly interesting, but item 7.2.2, the submerged land lease, that relates to the item that we added at the last minute here before the meeting, which is 10.4. I'm just going to forget to explain that. There's not much to explain, but those two items are related. The, they're the same project, I mean. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting all four recommendations, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 7.5 is the business of the Public Safety Committee with a meeting, a special meeting held on April 11th. Is there a report from the chair?
We'll keep, we'll keep it short. We had a special meeting on April 11th to relook at the electric fire truck. There were some questions on council regarding that, so they sent it back to Public Safety. We, we had our questions answered. It was approved unanimously and sent back here for you, you guys' approval. So any questions? I'm here to answer. Chief Volbrecht is here. If not, I will motion to recommend the approval out of the Public Safety Committee.
Motion is by Councillor Dean, second by Councillor Herrick, to approve the recommendation, which is the purchase of Rosenbauer EV fire engine in the amount of $1,853,702. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the purchase, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
At this time, are there any further committee or commission reports to be made without recommendations?
Seeing none, we can move on to old business.
Old Business, 9.1. I am recommending the approval of original Class B beer and liquor license application for Alice's Palace LLC located at 1108 Tower Avenue for a period beginning January 1st through June 30th, 2024.
So councilors, I'll, I'll introduce this again briefly. Thank you for your patience on this. We have reached an agreement with the applicant, Mr. Nelson, for several, or three conditions on the license. It's slightly different than, than I explained to you last, last week. I, I, we offered, and he had originally agreed, that, that the palace would close at midnight every night until December 30th. He asked that be 1:00 AM instead. I, I agree to that. I think that accomplishes basically the same thing. We were just looking to have it close before bar close, and that we would have review of the employees on the premises, similar to how we've done at other licenses where we've had problems in the past. That will expire in one year from the renewal. So this, this license is only good till June. The condition will stay on at renewal, but in June of 2025 will expire unless you, on your own initiative, decide to add it. And again, he, the license will become effective upon proof of control of the property, so namely title to the property. All that's explained in the conditions, which are attached to the license application now. So I am recommending approval of this license with the attached conditions. Motion is by Councillor Dean, second by Councillor Grasky. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the license with the attached conditions, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Item 10.1, I am recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses.
Motion is by Councillor Fantasy, second by Councillor Elm. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.2, Councillor Moffett is recommending waiving the bidding requirements and approve a resource management and grant capacity service agreement with MC2 Collaborative in an amount not to exceed $81,000 from the Neighborhood Improvement Fund.
Councillor Moffett, please.
Thank you. I, I recognize this is a little non-traditional for our processes, and I appreciate my colleagues letting me speak on this this evening. I'm super nerdy, and where other people's news feeds are maybe filled with sports updates or travel recommendations or all sorts of things, I get recommendations on urban planning and weird grants and things like that, because that's kind of my bubble. So this, it was a recommendation for a Zoom online webinar that popped up in my feed for an EPA climate justice grant, and nerdy like I am, I said, well, gosh, that sounds really exciting. I wonder what that is? And so I went to the Zoom presentation. And these are set up kind of like a community development block grant, but they're available through the EPA. They're meant to target communities like ours that have been negatively affected by industrialization, are at risk of climate change, have maybe low-income communities, could be high-minority communities or other things. They have a map available that shows areas that do qualify based on the income criteria alone, because that's produced through census data. So I looked at the map just to see if this was something that was possible for us, and found out that the census tracts that are north of Belknap in Superior qualify for this. Potentially, other areas in the city could qualify maybe through other criteria, but this is a fairly complicated process I figured out immediately. And so I didn't want to have to make the argument that an area qualifies and then make the argument that our community should get it. There's approximately $3 billion allocated for this program through the EPA. 2.8 of it goes towards actual grants, and then the remainder is to help with technical assistance, because these are very complicated grants. I spoke with the mayor and some of the department heads and was able to kind of talk through what might be possible with this. And so I guess I'll just go over a brief overview of some of the stuff that I've learned so far. Each applicant can apply for a project of up to $20 million. And I already talked about the areas north of Belknap in Superior qualify. Also, there's a small strip of property one block south of that between Super One and the library approximately. It lines up with the census tracts, and the map is attached. Superior can apply by partnering with a nonprofit organization, and in fact, must partner with a nonprofit organization, cannot apply, we cannot apply on our own. It's meant to be a community partnership, and it's meant to be extremely community-driven, which means that the, in order to qualify for this or to receive a grant, we'll need to demonstrate that we've done a great job of reaching out to people in our community to get their input, to find out what would make their lives better, and that we will solicit ideas from them and get their input on things that we think might be good ideas, and really kind of include the neighborhood residents in the process in selection of a, of a project. So it's really this community-led approach, and I think that our grant is, will be much stronger if we have that, can demonstrate that strong input from the residents. The funds, to the best of my knowledge, from what I could glean through this process so far, is that the funds need to be spent by the end of 2026, but I believe it's like the other ARPA funds, in which they can be, you know, you could have a vendor selected for a particular project, pay the vendor, and then our end of it is done. Again, this is to the best of what I've been able to glean through this super complicated process so far. Funding can be spent on a ton of different things, like I mentioned. So other projects that have been applied for and have received funding include green infrastructure, food access, affordable housing has been funded, solar upgrades, so some communities are doing grants or loans for residents to get solar panels on their roofs to lower their energy costs and create that energy resiliency. Clean water, climate disaster preparedness, brownfield cleanup, which is obviously very kind of generic, there's a lot of opportunity there. Air pollution monitoring is a big part that's mentioned in there, and so making sure that's part of the health outcomes for neighborhood residents. Tree planting, and then they talk about neighborhood-based, community organizing capacity. And so how are we creating more cohesive neighborhoods and helping people organize and create that, kind of that grassroots neighborhood development? So after discussing with the mayor and some of the staff members, there's some possibilities for projects that we could recommend to residents. Could include land trust homes in partnership with one-roof community housing. We've talked briefly about that before, but that would create permanent affordable housing in those neighborhoods, and those areas traditionally now have very low ownership rates compared to the rest of the city, and so to help kind of shift that momentum in the right direction. Municipal broadband installation, I think we could make an argument that it would help increase access for education, remote healthcare appointments, job opportunities from working from home at a lot of positions now, and so municipal broadband might be an option for that. Lead water service line replacement, potentially a replacement for Fire Station 2, which could include additional room for more staffing, an adjacent training facility, air monitoring data that could be shared with the, a community on the website, and a community room attached to that, which could be used for neighborhood meetings, emergency shelter if needed, community health initiatives, maybe somebody would come in and do a blood drive or a blood pressure check, or, you know, other, any flu shots, or any sort of like a community health pop-up kind of things like that. It could be used for local elections, frankly, from the city, if we wanted to have that precinct elections there. And then another idea that came up from the Parks Department was Wade Bowle is looking at planning for a splash pad and a public orchard, which would improve public food access and park improvements there for recreation and things as well. So this is just a list of possibilities, and I think the list will get larger as the community is given the opportunity to kind of pitch their ideas, too. The main thing I want to talk about tonight is the grant proposal of this nature and scope falls outside of what staff has capacity to manage right now. It's a really big process, which is why the, the EPA put aside like $200 million for technical assistance, because the technical assistance is needed. These are really complicated processes, and I don't, I don't want us to drop the ball on other things the city is working on right now, and so I think hiring a grant manager to help us through this process is a really prudent suggestion to find somebody that's able to walk through. We talked about the idea of like who could potentially manage this. We talked through, and I contacted several local grant writers. I do grant writing myself. I've never done a grant this big. The other grant writers I've talked to have not done a grant this big. It's, it's very technical and very complicated, and the people that I spoke to locally don't have the capacity or the time to manage a project of this scale. I did talk to one nonprofit organization in Duluth. They do have the capacity to manage something like this, and they're already doing it. They're applying for an application for Duluth, and I hope they get it. If Duluth gets a grant and we get a grant, that'd be wonderful, right? I think, none of this money can be spent in my district, but that's not important. These things create ripples in our communities, and so when the people in this part of town get these things, they'll, they'll create benefits for the rest of our residents and stuff, too. Like, I'll certainly probably visit Wade Park, and I'll, you know, we'll all benefit if we have better emergency services, and we'll benefit from a lot of these things. And of course, you know, broadband, for example, if you can pay for this phase, and it speeds along the financial stability of that utility, then of course, it speeds up maybe the next area getting installed and stuff, too. And so, anyway, that's, there's a lot on that. What I wanted to say tonight is the grant strategist that I'm recommending is MC2 of Wyoming. I worked with them on a small project previously, and they did a great job with that. Lisa's online this evening to answer questions, but I am recommending this evening that we skip the bid process and move ahead with this. It's, the proposal from them is contracted by the hour, and it would be, if we suppose a maximum of 100 hours for six months at 135 an hour would come to $81,000, and so I've set that as the maximum amount. But I think it's important to note that I think we can do this project for a lot less than that, and we would be paying them by the hour, so we'd be able to kind of monitor progress as it goes. The reason that I recommend working with this group is they have a whole team there of grant people and financial strategists, and so they can split up the work and focus on areas that they're each good at, and so that they should be able to like create some, some real, I think, cost savings there. And they won't be fumbling through it, like if we tried to hire a local person that maybe isn't familiar with this process. So I, I know it's kind of a stretch to skip our committees and the bid process, but in this case, I think it's the way to go, because we need to get this approved, so that we can get the process rolling, get the application in. The application window is already open, and in order to be competitive, we want to try and get it in as soon as possible and as thoroughly as possible. So that's why I'm kind of proposing that we move ahead on this. So I guess I'm available for questions, and Lisa, did you want to provide a quick introduction to your organization at all?
Hello, just confirming that you can hear me. Let me know that you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Sounds like it, perfect. So I am so grateful, Mayor, Council, and Garner Moffett, thank you for this opportunity. I could not have explained it better. Really, there's, you've been a good steward of the history, the information, as well as the work that's been done researching the grant. The only thing I would add is that we have a team of experts, which has been portrayed. We have a team of 20, and that all have their specialties, and we want to be able to make it as easy as possible, and it absolutely can be done for less. We are familiar in this federal territory. We have literally been in the trenches submitting 15 federal grants just within the last 14 days. So it is absolutely familiar territory. We work through the existing process, knowing that you've done the work and boots on the ground there, and having been there even myself personally, I'm familiar, just having a sense of the, the beauty and the good stewards of the work that you've been doing already allows us to speak to those specifics. But in addition to that, we also have, one of our vice presidents happens to have family in a 50-mile radius that we can also lean on and gather information as well. So that is also helpful. I don't know that I have anything more to add. I would just absolutely say compliments to the leadership for thinking progressively. The Biden-Harris administrative dollars are monumental, and to be able to access this is really transformational for your community. And so kudos to the leadership in looking at this as an opportunity for your community, and I'll remain for questions as well.
Councillor Moffett, I assume you would like to move approval?
Yes, I'm moved.
Okay, the motion is to approve the recommending of the waiving of the bidding requirements and approve the agreement with MC2 Collaborative in an amount not to exceed $81,000. Is there a second to the motion? The second is by Councillor Grasky. Discussion or, I'll entertain questions of Councillor Moffett.
Hey, Mayor Payne, this is Nick Reinhardt, Finance Director.
Go ahead, Director Reinhardt.
I do have one kind of concern with this. You know, as far as I know, we don't have that $81,000 apportioned in the budget anywhere. Is there plans on where that would come from?
Yeah, the motion has it coming from the Neighborhood Improvement Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Discussion or questions? Councillor Fantasy.
All right, thanks. I was able to talk with Councillor Moffett earlier, and he was able to answer some of the questions I had, and I think this project has a ton of potential, and really kudos to Councillor Moffett for, for finding this, taking it, running with it. And like I expressed to Councillor Moffett, the, the concern I have here is with the process, and, and I think we've missed some very important steps in the process. I don't want to make a motion yet to, to refer this, because I don't want to, I don't want to stop debate. I'd rather, you know, hear, you know, hear from the other councilors, but I would rather see this first go to a committee for, you know, for some discussion, for some vetting, and because this is, this is the first time that this has even been discussed. I would prefer that we at least throw this through, through a committee, whether, and I, I don't even know what committee that would be, whether it's Planning Commission, you know, Public Works, Parks and Rec, and, you know, just kind of get, have some discussion there. And I would also prefer that this go out for bid, only because I don't know if this, if this $81,000 spend, and I know it's kind of a, it's kind of a huge guess, you know, is it going to be $81,000, is it going to be $40,000? But I don't know if that $135 an hour is, is a screaming deal, or I don't know if it's inflated. I don't know if the $81,000 is anywhere in the ballpark. And so I would, I would rather this go out for, you know, for bid, but, but probably my biggest reason for wanting to pump the brakes a little bit here is I'm not even sure what we're approving here tonight, because in the, in the memo, and like Councillor Moffett said, he's requesting the council waive the bidding process for this work and approve the attached agreement with MC2 Collaborative in the amount of $81,000. But in the agenda, I don't even see an attached agreement. There's a, there's a proposal that outlines kind of the company's history, the scope of work, it has some references, but I don't, there, there isn't an actual contract or, or anything in here. So I guess I'm not even sure what we would be approving. And if, if we're going to be voting on 81, spending $81,000 for a consultant, I think more than anything, we need to be voting on the merits of that actual contract, where all, all we have here is just a... proposal. And in, in that proposal, it also lists the $135 per hour as a introductory rate. And so there's that, that's probably my, my biggest reason that I, I think we, I think we rushed this a little bit. And I appreciate the, the enthusiasm and let's, you know, let's just get, you know, get to work. I truly appreciate that, but there, there's, there's nothing for us to, to approve here tonight. There isn't a contract, there isn't a you know, anything. So I, I guess I'm, I'm not even sure what we would be approving here tonight. I would rather have this go back to a committee where we can talk through this, talk through a contract, talk through other things, send it to the contract analyst, have Frog take a look at it and, and do this right.
I'd like to address the process just a little bit. Without prejudice, I, I do recommend adoption of this, but I want to keep that separate from this because I, I spoke a great deal with Councilor Moffett about process. Because I, I I almost always share a lot of the concerns that Councilor Fennessey raised. Department heads approach me all the time about waiving the bidding procedure and I, I generally handle that by saying I can recommend it or authorize you requesting that of the council. If you make the case, and I give some parameters, I don't want it to be just, you know, well, I like working with this company. I usually want a little bit more argument than that. Now granted, if they well and truly are best in their field, say that. If they are the only person available, say that. If something is timely, say that. I just asked department heads to make the case if they're going to waive this. So that's, that's what I asked him to do. I think he's, now, whether he's made the case is up to you, not me, but the I generally am persuaded by it. It's, it was enough for me to endorse the proposal. In terms of what we would actually be approving, if there's a motion to refer and you want some advice on where to send it, happy to offer that. Unless you come up with a recommendation of your own, but the in terms of what we would actually be approving, this authorizes the administration to make an expenditure to this company in this amount. It is possible that, that after we look at it, if it's too thin, or if legal starts feeling a little uncomfortable with it, we may ask the, bring a contract back to the council if we feel that's necessary. We have had plenty of consultancy agreements that are just as thin as this. However, they're almost always under that $25,000 threshold, so you're never hearing about it. Just because we have relationships with consultants that, that help us. This is obviously novel, unique, so these questions are valid. But that, I, I hope that answers that question in terms of what you would be approving. You would allow the administration to spend up to this amount with this company. I don't want to dismiss the risks of that. I have not worked with the company. If, if it turns out that it's not going very well, I am going to stop spending money pretty quickly with them. And we would control that via monthly invoices. I may or may not have answered all those questions, but that's what I know about the background and I'm, I'm happy to elaborate a little further on that. But until I'm asked a question, Councilor Al.
All right, Councilor Moffett, thanks for working on this and it seems pretty comprehensive. Sheer similar concerns with Councilor Fennessey and I don't know if it was addressed. So these questions are probably for you and I know it probably has to go through mayor, but the, the timeline, you know, what, what are we risking if, if we do put this out to bid? And I don't know if you had stumbled across other potential vendors. And then you know, what is the success rate of MC2? This is kind of a whole new pot of money that's out there. And certainly capturing and being aware of this dollars, of these dollars that could be applied to the city is very exciting, but you know, we want to certainly pick the most successful company and I'm like, I'm excited about where this can go, but I, I don't know what I don't know. And, and I'm not sure if you could elaborate on more than just, you know, this coming up on the Facebook feed and then, then going into this deeper. So I just want to know what, what our options are and, and what the success rate, maybe the, the person on the online can, can talk, talk about their success rate. But those are just some of my comments and questions. So I don't, I don't know if Councilor Moffett can answer that.
Unless and until there's objection, I'll allow Councilor Moffett to respond directly to counselors individually. Go, go ahead, Counselor.
To the best of my knowledge, I don't know other vendors that could complete this project for us. So we did contact, like I said, other local grant writers and things like that, but because it's such a complicated process and there's so many like moving pieces. It requires a bunch of different skills. And so having a single person work on it, they might specialize in one area of the application, but not be able to maybe help with another part. And so I, I tried to do some research and I'm not familiar with another vendor that would complete this. If that helps answer your question. And then for financial control, we're approving an hourly rate, not a full contract amount. And so like, as the mayor mentioned, I guess if there is, if we felt the work was unsatisfactory in any way, we could, you know, not do further work with the vendor. So that does offer some control. It's not like we'd be writing a check for 81,000 for the full contract. It's an hourly rate. And so we see the progress of the work coming in and have some financial control over that. As far as the committee's structure stuff goes, we weren't sure exactly, or at least I wasn't sure exactly which committee this would go to, because it's a number of departments and a number of things going on. And I'm concerned that if it comes goes to a committee, it's going to really hold up the process because essentially we need to we need to get the grant application process rolling because we're going to need to hold probably late spring public input sessions with residents and then figure out as a community, what, what, what projects are we even applying for? And so the council's going to need to come back to this and kind of approve like, well, what, kind of like, what do we actually want to apply for? And so after the input, then there's back to the council, then it's back to writing and putting together each proposal. Let's say we decide to throw in fiber optic network. Well, then we need to figure out like, what's the area we're doing? How much is that going to cost and everything? And so then or we're doing the Wade Park, Wade Bowl improvements or any of these things. We're going to have to go out and get bids and figure out estimates and all these projects. And so like each of these separate components is going to need to be like, kind of separately managed. And we're going to have to have all those put together into one final application process before we can even send it in. And then we have to wait in here back before we can, of course, you know, know if we're getting it before we can spend any money. And then the money has to be spent within a reasonable timeframe too. And so
Yeah, yes, I, I think I'd address some of them. I don't still have a specific grasp on the timeline. I, having been involved with some other bidding processes, I know it can be very time consuming and we certainly don't want to lose out on anything, but if, if there's another option that's a better value that, I mean, I agree with your assessment that it needs to be a company and a team, but there may be another team out there that can do this too. And I just don't know that. And we haven't put it out for bid. But I guess, I don't know if the person on the phone can talk about their MC2's success rate at all?
What was your last name? Lisa? Can you explain, describe your success rate?
Yes, and thank you, Mayor, Counselor, and I appreciate the questions. Our success rate on the recent statistics is 93.75%. We don't broadcast that. We don't promote it because it's never a guarantee. But here's what I do know. I can absolutely guarantee that 100% of the grants can be recycled, repurposed and resubmitted, and that makes every grant 100% successful. So sometimes we're also asked to write grants, knowing that they won't be successful because they're trying to meet a deadline with the intent that they have to enter into multiple funding cycles. And so they're trying to get their placeholder in the federal system so that they can get those remarks back and resubmit. So yes, our success rate is very high, which is great. But I also go back and lean to the idea that we recycle, repurpose and resubmit for very purposeful reasons. Also, to address the introductory offer, our rates, our hourly rates are actually higher and we've reduced the rates. And that has another advantage so that you as an organization can claim also the reduced amount as a non cash match. So it's a built in asset that use, the organizations can use for leverage both cash and non cash in kind match. And going back to the grant writers versus grant strategists is that we really leverage every opportunity of which I've also just described. But we're also looking and analyzing it from a grant surveillance standpoint for federal, state, regional, local and other. And there are also some other wonderful other opportunities that exist in that. So that again, we are leveraging those existing assets to make sure that you're not using any unnecessary cash if you don't have to. And we'll follow your lead. The other important thing is we're very good soldiers. We'll follow your lead. And so those, these thoughtful and purposeful questions that's being discussed, we're, we're all ears and we'll follow your lead, whatever your decisions are.
Thank you for that.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. I talked with Counselor Moffett last week about this down in Madison. And, you know, I share everyone's excitement. It, it sounds like an amazing opportunity. I do have some, kind of some of the same questions I asked Counselor Moffett even down in Madison about, you know, other other companies that we could partner with. I've done some grant writing too, and this is a, it is a headache. A couple of points that I've been writing down and thinking about this as this discussion has been ongoing. By putting this out, I, I kind of echo some of the statements, we could find someone else that, that could help us write this. But I think the other part of that, by putting this out to bid or even back to a committee, we might find some partners that want to partner with us for this application because part of this, we need to have a nonprofit organization partner with us. We can't be the sole applicants. That's correct. I see you nodding your head there. So we might be able to find more projects. And I think that in the long run will probably save us money if we're doing some of the legwork ourselves instead of hiring this out. And we can do some of that legwork in committee. Where, one question I have though is, who, who has oversight of this project? Is that the administration? Is it?
You mean if it's approved?
If it's approved, yeah.
Yeah, we typically where something doesn't fit neatly into any one department, we'll select a department head to oversee it, to do, schedule most of the meetings with the consultants. Something at this level is going to be, my office is going to be involved quite a bit. I myself maybe had a lot of those meetings. I think there's a good chance, you know, Councilor Moffett named a couple, it could be parks, could be planning. I think it's going to depend on which department we start looking at is going to have most of the projects that we're looking for in the end. Or, you know, who, who I think has the most time available. But I mean, there's a number of considerations, but many department heads have overseen grants and consults for.
And I guess that kind of leads, we don't have anyone that currently is like a grant writer on staff or the county.
I think just about every department head is a grant writer.
Well, I know, let me be more specific. We don't have a job title grant writer. Okay, thank you. So I guess in this, if we put it back to committee, I mean, we could hold whatever committee that might be. I, I think maybe planning makes the most sense to me. I don't know whatever what everybody else is thinking, but we could have a special committee meeting just to talk about this one thing and try to hurry this process up as fast as possible. And I know I think sometimes the only thing that moves slower than governmental work is educational work. And so I, I get your concerns there and I want to make sure we don't miss any deadlines. Are there deadline applications that we would miss by, other than the spending part of it, are there application deadlines?
Councilor Moffett?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact deadline for it, but the window is already open. And so the longer we wait through a bid, like a committee process and then a bidding process and then selecting our person, then it will go out to the community again. After it goes to the community, then it's going to come back to us to select projects. Then it's going to go to like, we're going to have to design all of these projects. Then we're going to have to bid all those projects and design all those projects.
But we're going to have to.
And so like, this is like, there's already many phases in which this is going to come back to us again. And so we're, we're just on a tight schedule because the application window is already open and there's essentially money available until there isn't, right? And so they're enrolling approvals and so the sooner we can apply, the better our chances are.
When I, that, that makes sense. And when I looked at this, there's two tracks. Track one and track two, we're applying for track one, but there's also a separate track that we could apply up to, I think, $3 million as well. Is there, I mean, that would be a process that we would work out through this grant writing proposal or are we set to?
No, I think that's, that's what Lisa was just explaining, that the, the grants are multipurpose once written. They can be resubmitted, they can be adapted to other purposes.
Gotcha. Okay. I, I, I tend to kind of agree with some of my colleagues here that maybe sending this to a committee would be would be the right move. And I, I kind of want to vote against this and it's killing me to say that because I am not voting against this grant, but maybe voting more for setting it somewhere else. If that makes sense. Mr. Mayor, I know you've heard or offered your advice. Which committee do you see this landing in if, if, if we were to go that route?
If we're going to, if it were going to go to a committee, I would recommend either the Plan Commission or Committee of the Whole. Plan Commission has administered, has recommended consultants to us in the past and has done new policy out of the Neighborhood Improvement Fund. Committee, Plan Commission doesn't meet for another month. It actually meets tomorrow, but this would not go to that meeting. So it wouldn't meet for another month. And then you, even if it were a special meeting, you're asking citizen members to show up to that. Plus I have an appointment to make on that. And Committee of the Whole meets at the next council meeting or earlier if you set it. And then I, I recommend Committee of the Whole when counselors just need to talk about something more. So if you feel you have a lot more to talk about, I'd say Committee of the Whole. If, if you're going to trust Plan Commission or some other committee to, to really make a recommendation and then you can have a very brief discussion and accept the recommendation, then, then I would do that. If you have a lot more to talk about and ask, I would recommend Committee of the Whole. Can I interrupt for true parliamentary process here? We have a couple paths ahead. Obviously, counselors can vote yes and approve both of these things, that the waiving of the bid process and the approval of the agreement. They can vote no if, and both of those things would fail. However, if that happened, you should know I, I have the authority to put something out to bid because the council must approve the contract. I will put it out to bid immediately if, if this fails. That doesn't mean we have to accept any bids. It doesn't mean we have to complete the bids. If we want to send this, bring this up in another committee, we can keep talking about it and end that bidding procedure. But I will move to keep, act to keep this moving if it fails tonight. Third, it could be referred to a committee or disposed of in some other fashion. Postponed, but it sounds like referral is the only thing I've heard discussed. Counselor Grasky?
Okay, so this, this one part, 10.2, we're asking for like a sliver of the whole continuation of the project is what I understand. This is just getting the project started. And though I do agree with, it's not normally what we do, but pushing this to the process of setting it in, let's say we pick June 1st is the day that this grant writing starts. I don't know if that's a possibility, but it doesn't necessarily put us in, we're handing this amount of money over tonight per se. I don't, unless you can clarify that somewhat. But what I'm trying to understand is if we're making a small decision tonight per se and the whole idea of the project and some of these concerns where things will get vetted through certain committees and commissions, that is a part of this long process and the sensitivity of a two year window plus community input and all of the above. I think the things that some counselors are asking for, maybe the majority of the counselors asking for will be met. And I know it seems a little I don't know, maybe scary to just push this money out without kind of really, really dabbling through it, but I think those opportunities will arise. I just want to point that out. And if this was your project as a counselor, would you would you be wanting this to move forward if you knew all of the details? I think Moffett, you have a, or excuse me, Counselor Moffett, you have such an upper hand in this. And we've talked to a lot of, a lot of counselors as well, including myself. But I want this council to consider that this is just the beginning decision of many, many, many decisions. I just wanted to add that in as another thing to think about.
I, I have a duty to clarify the question. While Counselor Grasky is correct and we would spend very small amounts for immediate services, that is consistent with how we have always worked with consultants. So I, I hope you can trust me or at least our past practice. We would spend small amounts immediately. Technically, the motion does authorize the administration to spend the whole $81,000. Again, I've never done that. I have no intention of doing that. That would be terribly irresponsible, but it does authorize it. It puts the administration in, to the administration standpoint, we would be administering this proposal. Counselor Vansicle?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you, Counselor Moffett. I was sent this grant twice. And so thank you. Cause I was like, no. And if I write another grant, I think Becky would kill me. But I, I agree that Plan Commission makes the most sense. If I've ever wanted to create programming from the Neighborhood Improvement, I would, you know, typically go in front of the Plan Commission, which which a majority of the members are here. Is there, I have a couple of questions. Is there, I have a couple of questions. Is, is this like a rolling due date, or is there a hard submittal, submission deadline?
Counselor Moffett, I, I believe he answered that there, there is no specific due date, there's an expenditure date. Must be spent by the end of 2026. So, we can-
Okay.
-submit at any point.
First come, first served.
But the later, the longer we go, the less likely we are to get funds.
Okay. And do we have an expectation of submission to when we might hear back? Is that usually pretty quick?
Counselor Moffett?
I, I'm not sure the specifics on how long people are waiting on this. You know, as I kind of indicated before, they've set aside 200 million just for technical assistance people because this grant process is fairly complicated. I didn't have time to delve that deep into the process. And so, I don't know how long we would wait to hear back. But obviously, that's a factor because they presumably, you know, have a meeting schedule in which they get together and review these or whatever and stuff. And so, there's some sort of delay there in order to hear back. It's not like we send it Friday and here on Monday or something, you know? So, I'm not sure exactly what their process is, but there would be a delay until we heard. And then, you know, we'd have to figure out how to move those project components forward once we received the funding, you know, to expend the, the funds appropriately.
Thank you. Is there any opportunity with the $200 million of technical assistance, is there any chance we might get reimbursed for the, however many, the consultancy fees?
I'm not sure exactly how that works. I believe what they've done is they've contracted with vendors to essentially work with small communities like ours to sort of act like a phone support or email support kind of system. And so, they're available for probably virtual appointments and things like that to kind of answer questions about the application process. But I, they're not operating, they're not offering the actual application completion services. And I just, when we were looking through the, how complicated this process is, we just didn't feel like we had the staff time to allocate towards, like, coordinating all of the different, potentially several departments and things like that to get this all ready.
I think the agreement says there's a two-year commitment. Is that our two-year commitment to the consultant?
There.
Is that what that means?
There.
Thank you. And do we, do we have a sense of, do we have letters out to local nonprofits that we're potentially trying to connect with? Or is that something the consultant would do?
So, part of this process is that community input, once we kind of determine what sorts of projects are available, those suggestions could come from any of the residents or also could come, come from community and nonprofit partners. And so, there might be a nonprofit organization in the North End that's really excited to work on a project, and they might come forward and offer to be a partner. I mentioned in this that One Roof could be a potential partner for affordable housing. And so, I think as we know more about what those project components are, that will help us determine who potential partners could be. You know, we could contact the Lake Superior Health Clinic if we have health initiatives, we could contact, you know, the Estuarium or, or St. Louis River Alliance, whatever, if they're river-related, kind of water components. There's going to be a number of different nonprofit organizations in our community that are doing awesome work and might want to sign on to this project and be a co-applicant. But I think the process is for us to get going and then have all this public input opportunity so that those organizations can come forward with a proposal and neighbors can come forward and tell us what would be helpful for them. And then, once we know kind of what our options are, then we can kind of determine who our co-applicants are.
Thank you. You mentioned public input, and who is hosting those and who's, who's planning those, who's preparing those bids? Is that city staff or is that the consultant?
So, we haven't gone over all those details yet, but it could be a partnership with city staff and potentially someone from their staff to help us with marketing those things. Our fire chief offered to perhaps host an open house at the fire hall. And so, that would be nice for community members to see that facility and what's offering their emergency medical services and stuff now. And then also see some of the opportunities that we would have if we had a new station there. And so, that's an opportunity. There's also the music events that happen at Wade Bowl. And because one of the potential projects is at Wade, that would be a great opportunity where there's already community and neighborhood residents there to collect input with a table and, and find out from people there ideas. And of course, City Hall is located, and so, we could have something prior to a council meeting or whatever, or, you know, at City Hall here. And then the farmer's market, kind of, you know, on the other part of downtown, is also located in the area. And so, we could table there and collect input there and things. And so, there's a bunch of different opportunities where we don't have to recreate the wheel, we can kind of add on to things and, and join other community events to try and get as much input as possible. So, it could be a partnership between the grant strategists and our local people as well. And I can help coordinate some local stuff as well, and I'm sure staff can help with some of those things as well. Yeah, we just need this organization to help us kind of coordinate everything from the top and get the application really put together.
In similar cases, city staff have usually done the legwork of organizing the actual meeting. We get, the materials are usually supplied by the consultant.
I just have a couple more questions. You mentioned One Roof. Is there a possibility, if they get rejected and we get rejected, that a Twin Ports application could be stronger? Or is that even possible?
So, I, the application that's being completed in Duluth isn't by One Roof. That's a different nonprofit organization over there. And they're, I think they have different goals and outcomes they're looking for, for their residents. And so, our process will probably run parallel to theirs, and I hope we both get funded. But I don't, I don't think it would necessarily strengthen our grant if we work together. In fact, I think it might complicate it because it becomes less, the, the application become less centralized to the residents in the neighborhood. And so, it will be stronger if we can really show that it's what the people in our, our neighborhood want, so.
So, you have like North End, West Duluth. But you mentioned not reinventing the wheel. Over the last four or five years, whether it was the community theater arts, we did a public input survey for that. We did the comp plan input, we did the comprehensive rec plan, we did the active transportation plan, we did applications for stormwater landscaping that, you know, North End participated in. Can we reuse any of that data?
Yes, and add new data too. But yeah, I think the more we can show that we've gathered input, the better.
Okay, thank you. And finally, can we, I'll just say that I appreciate the gusto. I feel like when I was as kind of where you are in your tenure, I, people would get really irritated with me for not, like, following the rules. So, I just appreciate that about you and just wanting to get to work. Is there a way that we could put something of a not to exceed on this, or could we put, or could we approve, you know, up to $20,000, which I think would maybe help with the non-bid process? But could we put a not to exceed 160 hours and then they could come back and report? Or could we just put something, a check and point or a not to exceed on this?
There is already a not to exceed. It's not to exceed 81,000. So, you could amend the 81,000 down. It is pointless and therefore out of order to amend that number below 25,000 because I can simply hire them for that amount. The, so, any number between 25,000 and 81,000 would be a valid amendment. And since we are talking, there've been a number of suggested proposed motions coming up here. Just the, the general order we would do that would be an amendment first because then a, a proposal as amended could always be referred, postponed, voted down. Then we would look at motions that dispose of, of the main motion like postponement or referral. So, I'll, I'll probably call for it in that order when we get to the point. I'm just going to let us get through questions here and then we'll, we'll start calling for more, other motions.
Thank you.
Anything else, Counselor Van Sickle?
Thank you. I just wanted to, if there was a way to maybe just limit the amount we're biting off without completely stopping or sending back, and I'll ask, we'll wait on that for just a second. Thank you.
Counselor Ludwig, did you still want to speak?
So, well, yeah, just some of the questions I had, you know, when I was going through the, well, the proposal from the company. I, I guess I, for, I, I didn't really see to my satisfaction, are they the ones, I mean, in the end, will they be the ones writing the grant for us? I mean, I saw all this, you know, I, I guess I'm not really sure. I've got a question on the partnership because of course, we don't even know who we're going to partner with and that's, you know, that, that's a big part. I mean, we need a partner for the, for the grant. There, and then, yes, going through their proposal, I guess the deliverables, I, I wasn't certain. In, in the end, are they the ones that are going to write the grant for us? And I, you know, and I did go on the EPA's website and, and did a little research and some of the questions here too were, the first tranche of grants, I believe, were, they were going to be awarded in, in March. So, I think the process has already began. And it's a rolling grant. And so, yes, I mean, if, you know, if we delay, we do risk them running out of funding because this is a, you know, competitive grant process, of course. So, I, I just, I, I have a lot of questions, but I, you know, on the other hand, I, I don't want to miss out on this opportunity. So, the, the $81,000 does concern me. Is there a way that we could, without it being delayed with all these committees, to submit RFPs, you know, in a timely manner?
Yes, I, the, the administration has the authority to, to always submit an RFP. We can submit an RFP for anything or anything. Obviously, we want to be a little bit responsible, we want that to be done in good faith so that we really intend to recommend a contract at the end of it. The, so, you know, as I explained before, if, if first, if this were either significantly held up where, where I didn't think the council was leaning towards waiving the bid procedure in the end, or if it just voted down altogether, I would probably just put out an RFP in the next week or two. And now, that's going to take some time to get bids back. And then, if one of the bidders, including this one, looks to accomplish the goals of the proposal, I'm going to bring an actual contract or full proposal as, as it was submitted for the council to approve. Of course, that'll take a couple of weeks, but I can start an RFP process fairly quickly.
I just, I guess in my mind, I would feel better, in my logical mind, if it was us that was, you know, setting the scope and the deliverables, reading through this proposal. I, I still don't have it clear in my mind, the process and, you know, how the whole process is going to work, the partnerships. And so, so I would feel better if, if, like I said, if we set the scope, if we set the deliverables and put it out for, for bid in a timely manner. So, we, you know, the, the grant, the, I, I know there's a lot to work through, but the, the, the drop dead application deadline is November 21st, 2024. And then, also reading, I do believe, reading through this, it, it says awards under the community grants chain, the change grants program are limited by statute to three years in duration. Therefore, community change grant proposals must be designed to be performed and completed within three years from the award date. So, so, you know, I, I guess if we were awarded the grant, we'd have three years as far as the information that I read going through. And I may be, you know, I may be wrong, Counselor Moffett, because you said 2026, but I did, in reading through that today, it said three years, which would make more sense to me. So, but anyway, that, that's my two cents, so.
Before I recognize Counselor Elm, just about everybody's spoken, Counselors, Herrick or LeDine, any questions or discussion?
I'm not going to say too much. I don't want to start coughing again. Again, I apologize for that. I don't know what happened back here. Something just jumped in my throat and just wouldn't quit. So, I apologize for that. No, I think, again, Counselor Moffett did a real good job as far as going into this project. He put a lot of time and work into it. You know, however, though I do have to agree with Counselor Fennessy that, you know, we should go through proper procedure on this. And I think if we, if we start that right away, I think, I, I think we can still get this done. So, that's just my two cents, so thank you.
Counselor Elm?
I'm, again, I, I think going through the proper process is wise, but if time is of the essence, I'm not entirely opposed to approving this tonight. But still have some questions for Lisa MC2, you know. I'm not super familiar with your company, like your history, your key performance indicators, maybe your company size, how many employees you have? Do you have a lot of customers? And particularly, the age of your company. And particularly, I'm asking these questions because do, do you have the capacity to help us? Your website right now has hiring for these positions and I just want a, a better grasp of, of the composition of your company and, and the size of it. I, I don't know if you could maybe give a little history and about the age of your company and what it's able to do?
Thank you, Counselor. And this is Elm, this is Lisa again, Mueller with MC2 Collaborative. So, we are under the umbrella of MC2 Engineering and Construction. And we have been in operation for over 20 years. We are an 8A designation, a women-owned small business, which we claim very proudly and also can serve as a huge advantage to your applications as well. Because part of the Biden-Harris administration does require a portion of DEIA, diversity, equity, inclusion, accessibility. So, there's value in what our company and organization brings to the table. We probably have over 50 employees, a seasonal, part-time, contract, 1099 employees. As you can imagine with the different divisions, we have engineering, construction, design. We also have a land and real estate division along with mine, which is resource acquisition and government affairs. So, my division specializes in grant services. And the question of capacity, absolutely, that's a great question. We're always looking. We always want people, we, we search out talent and technology to make sure that we're always on the leading edge. We have over 10 full-time employees that are dedicated in very strong positions to make sure that we can manage the capacity. And then, we have the ability to seasonally and project-specific to turn up the dial as needed. We manage a crew that allows us to facilitate those projects on a federal, state, regional, and local level, along with congressionally-directed spending. And we have another federal partner along with Merchant McIntyre, which is another firm out of Washington DC. So, we have those partners physically in DC. In addition to that, we've recently shared the stage with EPA, David Piantanida, to represent Wyoming Funding Summit on the hills in the ask of Senators Barrasso, Lummis, and Governor Gordon. So, we have been in a position to be the teacher, trainer, instructor, facilitator for two years in a row. So, it's an opportunity for us to shine as a, in our experience and expertise and demonstration of the work that we've done. Also, in addition to that, when Counselor Ludwig asks a question about who writes the grants, I also want to make sure it's important to note that no one person writes a grant. It is a Herculean effort on everyone's part. And it is a contribution by all people, all organizations and all departments. But the, as I will sometimes say, the degree of herding cats is also something we're very good at. We're comfortable in the complexity of gathering information and being able to submit it because it comes down to being able to collect the information in a way that the federal government requires in very specific details and instructions in fine print and then get it into the portal ready. So, it is a combination. We can't do it alone, along with city efforts not being able to do it alone on their own as well. And one other additional remark regarding the consultant's time being reimbursed, going back to the idea that as part of- Going back to the idea that as part of EPA and the Biden-Harris administration for IIJA dollars is that it is very specific to investment resilience. And we want to be able to make those demonstrations. So the work or the dollars that are spent on services of which we provide along with maybe other engineers or other contracted contributors to the project, that would be absolutely written in as an investment in that EPA resilience and for what the narrative is asking for. So in other words, we're capturing it in a way that says that not only is the city directing this leadership for this capacity of growth for infrastructure, but they're also saying, we're investing in the subject matter experts who can facilitate this project. And that absolutely is one of those markers. It's an indicator. So back to keywords, keyword indicators. That is one piece that you may not be reimbursed for it, but you can use it as a positive in your narrative and demonstration for the work that's being done leading up to it. So you're on the right track. You're asking the right questions. And in addition to that, the last piece is a community benefit plan. The federal government, in most of these cases for federal applications, are requiring community benefit plans, especially on the Department of Energy side. And when you can assemble the people, the partners, the stakeholders in that communication engagement of which Counselor Moffett has described, you're bringing all those parties together. And we have orchestrated many of those already to date successfully in federal grant applications. So we already know what's expected. It is an evolving and changing world, which is why grant surveillance is so important to us and the work that we're doing. Because in addition to the NOFOs, which is the Notice of Funding Opportunities, which have the fine print, the federal government says what's required, NOFOs are technically on a 2.5-year delay and they're making changes on a regular basis. So we know what the, if we're doing our job in the grant surveillance world, we know based on our relationships with those funders and our partners in DC, we're hearing the pendulum swing of those interests of what are those keywords and shifts in the funding. So I appreciate those counselors who have also done the homework to see who's been funded. Because in addition to that, that is an indicator of what they're wanting to see built in the infrastructure for IIJA and those dollars that they're giving out. So again, I value and appreciate all the remarks and all the questions, which absolutely leads me to a place of saying, you're doing the right things for the right reasons and you're aligning that mission with what the federal government intends to fund. So keep talking and keep sharing those remarks because you're headed in the right direction.
Thank you.
Counselor Vencek?
Thank you. Lisa, thanks for that response about the reimbursement. I wanted to ask, are you involved in filling this out for any other communities? And I'll just ask that first.
Great question. Thank you, Counselor Vencek. I appreciate that. So we have assisted an EPA grant and we will not, because we're very particular about the projects that we take, so that there is not a conflict. We are very cautious about the cycle and the due dates. And so the window of which you have, there is no conflict. We're not writing this grant for any other client at the same time.
Thank you. And if the council requested, you know, something of a workup, like letters of reference, outlines, sample timelines, just something of a framework, average costs, is that something you could provide?
I am happy to provide, Counselor Vencek, anything that you ask, but I want to make sure I'm understanding the question. When you ask for a timeline or additional documents, do you mean as samples of work that we've done? Or do you mean samples of the project, let me rephrase, let me rephrase the question, that you're looking for samples of how we would build out timeline for our work on a grant service project? Or do you mean timeline specific to a project that would be submitted to the federal government? There's a distinguished line. I just want to make sure I'm understanding the difference.
I guess I would defer to you in what would be most helpful and understandable.
Sure.
I, thank you. And I think, you know, I saw an article in The Telegram today that there were some projects for cleanup in the North End, some environmental cleanups. And, you know, I think if the counselor was willing to put a lower cap on the spending where we could potentially regroup at the same, if we could approve a smaller number somewhere between 26,000 and 30,000, I think that North End is worth it. And I think if the amount were smaller, I think, I don't think we could get into too much trouble and I'm willing to take a chance on North End. Thank you.
Counselor Moffett, I'll recognize you one last time. I think we're past questions at this point. There may be more, but we should probably try and get to some decisions here. So he makes a brief final remarks.
Yeah, sure. I guess I would entertain if somebody was interested in a motion to decrease the maximum amount. Essentially, we're just trying to look at how to get this project started. And from a practical standpoint, not knowing how many hours it's going to take, the administration could have assumed that perhaps it would be under the $25,000 and could have just started the project with this consultant. But we're really here because we wanted to like get the community involved and get the council involved as soon as we possibly could. I wish I could have pitched this project to everyone last year. I didn't know about it. So, you know, and I understand this is not the ideal process. Again, thank you for humoring me and letting me bring this up tonight. That being said, whether the amount maximum not to exceed numbers, 81,000, or you approve a little bit less or whatever, I'd really like to get going on the project. It's not like we're going to write a check for $81,000 next week and it's going to go to the, you know, the consultant. We're paying an hourly rate, $135 an hour. Try and hire an electrician or a plumber tomorrow for that. This is not a large amount of money. It's roughly what we paid for a pickup truck for the fire department, you know. Probably we're going to end up spending less than that, right? But what we can get out of this is potentially $20 million of neighborhood improvement for one of the areas of the city that the federal government recognizes needs it the most. And so we have this money sitting aside. We haven't been using it for anything. It's just extra money that really, I think, this is the intent of it, right? Is like, we're not just spending the money on a small project. We're using it as an investment to get so much more for people that really could use it. The items that we talked about tonight and the ideas that the community and our nonprofit partners can bring forward would be absolutely transformational for this neighborhood. And again, not a penny of this goes to my district. But it's super important because when that area does better, it ripples. And it'll ripple into my district and it'll ripple into everybody else's district. Most of you are on the committees that will be looking at projects for this. And you'll get a chance to develop proposals, put those out to bid, work with vendors, all these things. And so this is just the beginning of a project that we could have started without bringing it forward to you this evening. But this is as soon as we could bring it forward to everyone and get you involved and really make this a ground-up community effort. So if you must decrease the amount, decrease the amount, but please, let's get started. It's not a crazy amount of money. The money is just sitting around specifically to invest in something like this where we can get a really big return on our investment. And our other local vendors do not have the capabilities of this organization to do this grant. I've written a lot of grants. I don't have the ability to manage this process. The same is true for our other local grant writers. We cannot shoulder this onto our staff people and expect them to do it in-house. But they can help with some of it, which will help keep that dollar amount lower. I'm just, I really hope we can move forward if you need to lower the amount, but let's get started. The people in the North End need this.
Okay, Counselor Fennessey?
I started off by saying that, you know, I would much rather see this go to the committee first, but we've kind of had that committee conversation here tonight. And so I think, I think possibly Counselor Ludwig might have offered up the right solution. And instead of sending this to a committee where it either gets referred to another committee or it gets referred back here or, you know, whatever, and just stalls out in a committee, I don't think any of us, at least the impression I'm getting, are saying, let's not do this. I think the hesitation is, let's make sure we're doing it right. And so, you know, what Counselor Ludwig, you know, kind of asked is, what if instead of going to a committee, we just basically, in a sense, send it back to the administration to do the RFQ? Because then from there, you know, we can get multiple different, different ideas, different ways of doing this. And then we can kind of figure it out and, you know, look at those different proposals and that might answer some of the unanswered, you know, questions that are still left here tonight. And so, because I know the, we're talking a big, big number, 81,000, 160, whatever, $5 an hour. I would almost prefer if we had somebody come in and say, you know, we're going to, for $50,000 or for $80,000, we're just going to take you to the finish line. Instead of, you know, just the, you know, not knowing if it's going to be 30,000, 40,000, whatever, just somebody come in and say, we can take you to the finish line, get you, you know, on the desk for, you know, for a decision, you know, for X amount. But I would, I think Counselor Ludwig had it right where if we just put it out for bid, then we can weigh those decisions. So Mayor, I don't know where, if that requires a motion to send it to you or if we would just postpone this for two weeks?
No, the best way to accomplish that is to simply vote down the main motion. As I explained before, if the motion fails, I'll put it out to bid more or less immediately because that, putting it out to bid does nothing except solicit proposals. So, and we never really entertain motions to put something out to bid. Even committees just request the administration to do that. We do that. Sometimes we bring scope to committees, but in this case, I think the scope is very clear. So we would put this out to bid ourselves directly. So the best way to accomplish that, I would not recommend any motions to do that except to simply vote no on the main motion. If you, if you object to, because if we, if it does not pass, the bidding requirements have not been waived and then we would have to go through the bidding process.
What about, what about a motion to amend not waiving the, strike out not waiving or whatever, the bidding requirements? Because we're going to need to, I'm just trying to think, skipping a future step. If this is under 25,000, then your office can just take it. But if it's over 25,000, you still need the council approval to do that. So I guess that's what I'm trying to, you know, to accomplish is it's not even the, you know, the spend that's concerning me because I think we'd get our money tenfold, hundredfold. I would just rather see this go out for, out for bid, but I wouldn't want to, you know, send it, you know, or, you know, vote it down tonight, you take it. And then next, you know, two weeks from now, you come back and you say, you want to, we need your approval now because, you know, what we're looking at is over 25,000. So is there any way that we can accomplish, if you're following me, all of that tonight, send it back to you with, even keep that same dollar amount?
Generally speaking, the only time you would ever need to make a motion to that effect would be if I or the administration general refused to put something out to bid. If we were saying, nope, I will, I'm not going to occupy Jane Darwin's time with that, then you could make a motion conceivably compelling it submitting your own bid. But in this case, I'm absolutely going to put it out to bid. See, I'm just trying to make the parliamentary process the easiest way. To make a new motion would unnecessarily complicate it. If you reject the main motion, it is going out to bid. The reason to not reject the main motion, the reason to vote yes is to, so to accomplish what you want, Counselor Fennessey, you would vote no on the main motion. To accomplish what Garner Moffett wants, to speed up the process, even committee would be faster than that. That's been my, I'm not necessarily arguing against that. Just want the council to be clear. The bidding process typically takes at least 30 days to advertise. There's going to be a week, maybe even two of creating the actual request for proposals. So we will be into the, could be into June by the time we're getting those proposals back. Then we would make a recommendation. I'd meet with Counselor Moffett and we'd have the other bidders and we would bring that to the council and you would then approve that contract. So you'd see everything. The only argument against that is time. So doing nothing or voting no sends this to bid.
Sure. So there wouldn't be any way to, I mean, I don't think any of us want to vote, you know, no. And I also don't know if that would, if that would be a bad look. You know, we're asking for a large, a large grant when, you know, four weeks earlier, the council voted no to, you had to do that. I don't know if that, if those dots would ever get connected in the grant process.
Okay, if you, that actually is covered. The lowest precedence motion you can make is, let me just double check. I think it's postpone indefinitely, which is usually done when folks don't want to vote no on something because they don't want to express disapproval of it. They just don't want it considered right now. Postponing indefinitely would also put it out to bid. However, we could still discuss everything else that, so if somebody, if you made a motion to postpone indefinitely, we could, I'm going to get this wrong. We could conceivably amend that, but postpone indefinitely would do the same thing as voting no. So would objection to the consideration of the question. But you need six votes to pass any of those.
Right. And then so, so if there's a motion to postpone indefinitely, then it just stays off until somebody brings it back, you know, to the table. And that time would be like, if you have the RFQ or whatever. Okay, so I'll make a motion to postpone indefinitely.
Motion to postpone indefinitely, is there a second? Motion by Counselor Fennessey, the second by Counselor Johnson, to postpone indefinitely. Well, this is a new question. If anybody would like to argue for or against that, I'd ask that you keep it relatively brief. I think most folks have made their position clear. Counselor Johnson?
I'll just reiterate, like I, I don't want to vote against the North End. We're against any money. So this seems like the best next option for no.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely. Okay, Counselor Moffett?
I would encourage people to vote against the motion. If you want to lower the amount, make a motion to amend or refer it to a committee, make a motion to refer it to a committee. I, we got to move this forward and a motion to postpone indefinitely does not move it forward.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Counselor Fennessey?
I'll be really quick. It, I think it absolutely does move it forward. It moves it forward by opening up our range of companies that were asking to, you know, submit a proposal. And we may, we may have one that comes in, better metrics, lower price, you know, or, you know, or whatever. They may have, you know, some better ideas. And that's exactly what this does. So this, in no way stalls it. If anything, it just moves it forward with, you know, with more purpose.
Counselor Vencek?
Can you, sorry, there was a motion and a second by Counselor Moffett and Grasky and then a motion to postpone indefinitely that supersedes the original motion?
Yes, this is, this disposes of the main motion.
Okay. And a motion to postpone indefinitely does not automatically go to either the Plan Commission or back here?
It disappears until somebody, it disappears forever until somebody brings it back in some other form.
Postpone indefinitely is not the same as somebody bringing it back from the table though, right?
No, that, you would have to postpone to the next meeting for it to come back automatically. Or the motion to table, we almost never use. That only affects this meeting tonight. You could bring it back later tonight. Postpone is when we want to talk about it on some other date. Postpone indefinitely, I would also argue, you know, because our rules are on reconsideration, we would typically want it to be something else. You know, as Counselor Fennessey described, it would be, you know, in the form of a new contract or we've put it out to bid. Technically, nothing prevents a counselor from reintroducing something at every meeting that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Postpone indefinitely does not approve it, but does not vote against it. The whole point of this motion is to stop this from happening without expressing disapproval of the concept. That's how it's described right in Roberts' Rules.
So with the intention though, to give the administration an opportunity to prepare an RFQ, receive the proposals, and present to the council those options?
Yes, I mean, that's what Counselor Fennessey Yes, I mean, that's what Counselor Fennessy expressed, it's what I've said I would do. Again, I'm not recommending this motion, but if this is not adopted tonight, I've said a few times, I intend to put this out to bid. I mean, you're not forcing me to do it, but that's what I'm telling you I'm going to
I guess then I would wonder why didn't it, if it was, I don't know how long this has been in motion, a day or a week, three weeks, I have no idea.
The reason we didn't is because, as Counselor Moffett, I think, described pretty ably, you know, the bidding process takes a long time. It would have taken longer than approving it tonight. It will, even if we had started this when he first brought it up, we would still be in the bid process.
Okay, okay, thank you. I'm not gonna support the motion, and instead, we can take the vote first, but I'll suggest that we spend no more than twenty-eight thousand, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Counselor Moffett?
Yeah, just real quick, if we end up in a bidding process, we could be looking at mid-June before this comes back to the council to select a consultant. That means then we have to schedule public meetings, that means those are mid-July. Then we have to assemble all the data, come back to the council to select projects. Then we're looking at August, probably mid-August. Then we have to develop all of those projects. That means if you want to build a fire hall, you have to figure out how much is the fire hall gonna cost, who can we go through, which that process takes time. You want to build a broadband network, you need to spec that all out, figure out exactly what's the dollar amount on that. You're starting in August, the applications are due in November. If we go through this and delay it tonight, we might not be able to get the funds. And it severely limits the projects that we can do because we have to be able to, like, send in the full application, and the longer we wait, the lesser our odds are, and if we extend it this long, we might not even be able to apply.
Really nervous about saying this, but technically, all other motions can be made before we vote on this. So you could make a motion to amend, if you feel like it would affect people's decision to postpone indefinitely, you can make a motion to amend right now, but it's the lowest precedent motion. You know, it's the second, people look confused, I regret at saying that. Is there any further discussion on the motion, but Counselor Elm?
Yes, just kind of going back and forth in my head, and what Counselor Moffett said with the deadline in November, again, going through this bidding process before can take a lot of time, and I'd hate to jeopardize, especially if other consultants, if this is getting more popular, they're gonna be filled up with other municipalities, nonprofits. So I guess I respect the spirit of where Counselor Fennessy's going with this, but I think we need to make some kind of decision tonight so we don't further jeopardize these larger dollars.
Counselor Johnson?
I'll jump in that water that you just laid out there for us. I'll make a motion to have MC2 come back to council with a contract instead of an agreement prior to the next meeting.
I think that's out of order, I don't think we can compel them to do anything. We can note your statements for the minutes if you'd like.
So I guess the point of that then would be, I would like to see an actual contract or agreement before, with a clearer scope of work from our end versus just a, what we have in front of us right now, and I feel like that might get us to the finish line on getting something passed tonight.
Then what you want is a motion to postpone to the next meeting, and then you can vote yes or no based on whether they bring that contract, or postpone to any other time you name.
Okay, I'll amend to postpone until the next meeting, and add a caveat that I hope to see a contract at the next meeting.
Is there a second to the motion to postpone to the next meeting? Hearing no, second, that motion fails. Okay, further discussion on the motion to postpone indefinitely? Okay, here, Counselor Vansickle?
Sorry, can I just ask, the next council meetings in?
Three weeks.
Three weeks. And if we asked for materials, samples, letters of reference, does that feel outrageously out of reach? I have to ask.
Counselor Moffett, if you can answer very briefly?
Yeah, I would just say there are references attached to this, and some of the grant proposals that they've worked on before, so some of those qualifications and references are here to check, you know, and so there are people here with, you know, information listed, so there's already references here, please, you know.
Did we check them?
I'm not aware that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Grasskey?
I, okay, I feel like I'm here, from everyone, really, including myself, a lot of I guess, I guess, I guess, and so I think we really need to try to think of a compromise here, and I'm sorry, that might not be a nice slam dunk as maybe thought, but let's, I would encourage this council to come up with something that meets in the middle from all of the feelings that we have right now.
I gotta offer this, counselors, you can make a motion to amend the main motion that will either pass or it will fail, and then the motion will be amended or not. And after we have figured out whether we're gonna amend it, then we will be coming back to the question of whether to postpone. I've been reading this and reading this, I'm sure about that. If somebody wants to make a motion to amend, it is in order. We will set aside motion to postpone indefinitely, come back to that motion after we've resolved any amendments the council wants to talk about. You've all, several of you have mentioned it, is there anybody that wants to make a motion to amend the main motion? Counselor Vansickle?
Can I make a motion to strike not to exceed eighty-one thousand dollars to not to exceed twenty-eight thousand dollars pending a presentation from MC, what was it, MC2? With something of a progress report at that amount or hourly? How many hours is that? Twenty-eight thousand dollars, not to exceed.
Yeah, Counselor, I'm gonna recommend just limiting that amendment to the number twenty-eight thousand dollars. When that is hit, you can require anything you want before approving more money.
Thank you.
The motion is to amend the main motion by striking out the number eighty-one thousand and replacing with twenty-eight thousand. Is there a second to that motion? A motion is by Counselor Vansickle, the second by Counselor Ladeen, to amend, again, this will not, this will not, we'll come back to postpone indefinitely. The question is just whether to change that number from sixty-one thousand to twenty-eight thousand, any discussion? From eighty-one thousand to twenty-eight thousand, apologies.
I have a slight, I'm sorry, I have a slight question. So are we asking for that amount to, we spend that amount at twenty-eight, then we have a progress report? Is that what I heard?
She mentioned that, that's not going to be part of the motion, but obviously, there would be a progress report before any more money can be.
Okay, thank.
Counselor Johnson?
I mean, whether we spend eighty-one, twenty-eight, or thirty, we're still gonna end up spent, like, at the same point when we come back. If they come back at twenty-eight thousand dollars, we're still gonna end up having the same exact discussion, aren't we? I mean, this is, it seems, I get where you're trying to go with this, or where we're headed, but aren't we just, if they come back at twenty-eight thousand, they're just gonna be coming back asking for more money? Is that just to check some balance, I guess, is that what?
Conceivably, they would come back for more money, but this just prohibits the administration from spending more than twenty-eight thousand. So if they need more, if we want to spend more, we must have the council's permission to do so.
So with the representative from MC2, can you do this for twenty-eight thousand dollars?
If I'm understanding the question, we'll agree to reducing the cap for a certain period of time. There's no way we can put ourselves in a position to say we're gonna do the entire grant with all of the deliverables for that amount. So we're not agreeing to doing all of the work and services that it requires to get you into portal-ready grants submitted for twenty-eight thousand dollars. But in the spirit of what you're trying to address, that there's a benchmark, a D-mark line for deliverables, we're happy to comply. It's just a matter of stating it in such a way that it helps us to accomplish that goal. But I just want to also ensure that we're not agreeing to reduce the hours to get you to that grant because I can tell you, it's not feasible based on our experience with the federal grants we've been submitting just within the last week. So I honor what you're trying to do, but I just want to make sure we phrase it properly.
Okay, I guess that makes sense. I think if we're gonna award this bid, we should award the bid for the total amount, not a different amount, so I guess I'll be voting no against that.
Questions, Counselor Fennessy?
I guess I'm kind of tracking Counselor Johnson there. I don't know what that solves. If it's eighty-one thousand, I mean, although it's kind of a guess, you know, Counselor Moffett, I mean, it's, you based it on something, right? It's, right, so I mean, it's, knowing that it's gonna cost eighty-one thousand dollars, but then just to drop it down to twenty, you know, whatever thousand, I don't know what that accomplishes, but again, that brings me back to my original point is, without a contract with deliverables in that contract, we don't, we don't know where we're at, where if we had a contract that had, these are the deliverables, we'd be able to say, all right, let's pull out, if the goal is to get the spend down, let's pull out deliverable A, Z, and an M, we can do that ourselves to get the, you know, the cost of this down, but we don't have a contract, and so that's why it's, it's so hard to just say, yeah, let's just lower the number, let's raise the number, you know, leave it the same, because we don't have a contract or, as the agenda states, we don't have an agreement that we can even review, look at, or anything like that, so.
Counselor Grasskey?
I would beg to question, that is at our job. I mean, I understand, is it our job to decide how this grant is supposed to have taken out Y, Z, whatever letter of that? I mean, that's the point of investing into this company, to use a specific money from a fund that will potentially create a very large, large investment that at some point this part of town has not maybe even been considered. So I just, I get that we're gonna, we could sit here all night and throw around numbers, but I would encourage that we either go for it or we decide on something.
Counselor Moffett?
Yeah, so real quick, so the eighty-one thousand dollars, again, it was laid out in my thing, was selected by me, not by the consultant, because it is six months' worth of work roughly to get the grant done. Their offer to us is one hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, and they said seventy-five to one hundred hours each month. Essentially, worst-case scenario, it's eighty-one thousand dollars, but it shouldn't be. A large part of what we're asking them to do is to wrangle cats, and those cats are us and the city staff, and if tonight's an indication, it can be very difficult, right? And so the higher that amount is, is totally dependent on our staff and upon us, and then how much work it ends up being to have to email somebody four times to get an estimate on something, or to wait to get replies on emails, or to, you know, get numbers from the finance department, or to work with consultants that we're working for to do a bid for a new fire hall or something. And so that's why it's so incredibly ambiguous, because there's just a large number of unknowns. Worst-case scenario, it takes them a hundred hours a month. I sure hope it doesn't, but that's why there's this cap here, because managing a project like this can just be crazy, and you're largely dependent on getting information from other people, a lot of other people, and then compiling it all. And so it's really difficult to put an A, B, C, D component structure into place because you're collecting a bunch of things and you're really compiling it at the end. So there isn't like, oh, I finished the first two paragraphs, or, oh, we finished the segment of it. For example, they might finish the fire hall segment, but then not have numbers back for broadband or something, and so like, determining what those deliverables are is really difficult until you have the final application put together. It's a max of eighty-one thousand because of those numbers, and I sure hope it's less, but that's totally up to us and staff.
Counselor Vansickle?
Thanks, I just wanted to, I guess I should have put more context. So twenty-eight thousand is about a third of the hours. The full proposal, I think, is six hundred hours. So I guess my intention was just for us to see, and I don't even know what they could provide with two hundred hours' worth of work at potentially, but I think that would give a progress point of a couple of months. I guess, I guess I'm not hearing what the heartburn is. Is it the money? Is it not a contract? Is it the process? So I guess it's a combination of all those things for different folks here. My only intention was to not stall the, not stall the process that the administration essentially had the council's blessing to move forward with an amount, pretty close to an amount they could have moved forward with anyhow, just a few thousand dollars more. So it's about a third of the original proposal, so if it's the cost and the process, I think we've accomplished a great deal of that conversation tonight. So my only effort there was to break up the final cost to about a third, and I don't know what the Lisa might be able to have us expect after two hundred hours. I think Counselor Johnson's motion to postpone to the next council meeting made perfect sense as well. Maybe there would have been materials similar that could have been presented, I don't know, but if this gets us going and it's a smaller amount, maybe that helps shore up some of the process and conversation, thank you.
The effect of the motion, the way I'm going to treat this, I'm not gonna, if nothing happens tonight, if nothing is approved, again, I will put this out to bid. If some amount of money is approved at this point, I'm not gonna just spend under twenty-five thousand without approval of the council for this consultant and the waiving of the bids. At this point, I want the council's approval for this consultant. But if you approve it in this amount, I am going to begin working with them as though we are going to go the full six months, and then I will bring back their early results and more conversation before we run out of money. That would be the result of this if you adopt this motion. However, it's still in order to refer this. If we, well, postpone to the next council meeting did fail, you could postpone, or I'm sorry, you could refer to a committee of the whole, and we could just keep talking about this three weeks from now, you could just take the whole package, including this amendment, postpone, and send the whole thing to committee. That is a way of disposing of this now. That is about the, one of the only motions remaining to us at this point. But unless somebody's gonna take the mic right now and recommend that, I'm gonna ask if there's any more discussion. Counselor, I would remind you, I think we've all, you've all expressed what you think of these proposals, and I don't know that debate is serving to convince anybody else anymore, so I'd encourage us to get to these questions. And unless there is a motion to refer to a committee, I'm gonna ask if you're ready for the vote on the motion to amend. As I'm hearing nothing, the question then is whether to amend the main motion by striking out the number eighty-one thousand dollars and replacing it with the number twenty-eight thousand dollars. I'm gonna try a voice vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. In the opinion of the chair, the noes carry, and the motion fails. The question now is on whether to postpone indefinitely the entire motion. Again, I believe we've all expressed ourselves on that question. This does not vote in favor or against the merits of the motion, it merely takes it off of our agenda with no particular opinion. And again, what I would do is move to put this out to bid, and I, at least, I would not bring anything else back to the council until I had proposals returned from that RFP, which would be a month and a half to two months from now, most likely, unless a counselor brought something up via committee or directly to the floor. Question then, is whether to postpone indefinitely? All those in favor of the motion to postpone indefinitely, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no? Take a roll call just to be safe, I think that failed.
Grasskey?
The question is postpone indefinitely, Grasskey votes no.
Ladeen?
No.
Vansickle?
No.
Moffett?
No.
Fennessy?
Yes.
Elm?
Ludwig?
Eric?
Uh, I have six against, two in favor. I'm sorry.
Oh, my goodness, Mr. Johnson.
Six in favor, three against, or, I'm sorry, three in favor, six against. The motion to postpone fails. The question is now on the main motion. It is unamended. This is our final vote on whether to both recommend the waiving of the bidding requirements and approve the agreement with MC2 Collaborative. I better take a roll call on this as well.
Mayor?
Counselor Fennessy?
The, we're, we're voting on, you, you said to approve the agreement with MC2. What agreement are we approving? There is no agreement in, so, so tomorrow morning, when you sign the, the, the council packet, what, what, what are you signing that the council approved? Because the agenda item is to waive the bidding requirements, which, yeah, that's in order. But to approve the, the agreement with MC2, but there is no agreement in the council packet with MC2?
Yeah, there's a description of services. It's not a contract. It, it is true. We would, like any other vendor, we, they would provide us services. We would pay for them. If, if we agree that they have provided the service as we understood it, we would pay it.
But my, my question is, where is the agreement?
It's the proposal described in the packet.
Can, 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 can we get some clarification if, if we're, we're even in order approving the agenda item that says we're approving an agreement, and that's the, that's why you stated the motion, but there is no agreement in the, in the council packet?
Think, I mean, I, in my opinion, the, the term agreement is a semantic one. The, the main purpose of this, as I explained before, is to allow the administration to spend up to $81,000 uh, with MC2 Collaborative. The, uh, we understand that they would be providing services substantially similar to what they've described. If, uh, there is no contract that we could enforce, but they cannot compel us to spend the money either.
I mean, Friday, I hate to put you on the, on the spot, but can, can we just make sure that we're, we're, we're on, on the right track, that we're, we're approving an agreement that doesn't exist?
Well, the, the services are described in some part in the documents before you. I'm looking at, in particular, page five of their, of their proposal. And page five, uh, lists their scope of services described and their grant-specific scope of services. So I would, I would say that's the cornerstone of what we would expect MC2 to start, uh, doing for us after tonight. The mayor's right, when, you know, it resonates with me was his, his comments earlier about we, we've had agreements with, with companies that have been thin. It doesn't mean they're unsuccessful. We've had agreements, development agreements and other contracts with companies that haven't been thin, and they've, and they've gone poorly. So this is going to come down to whether or not the firm that Ms. Mueller represents tonight and has described via Zoom is, is going to deliver what they've talked about, and if we can administer, and, and, and monitor the work that they're doing for us and approve that by way of blessing issuance of checks.
And, and if this goes south, in, in one, one way or the other, do we have any recourse where there's no actual agreement? I mean, this is basically just like a, a handshake agreement. Do we have any recourse if, if things are going south?
Yeah, in my opinion, if, if things are going south, we'll stop, stop doing this.
Okay. Okay. If we fulfill that invoice at all, if we dispute that the services were provided, we're not going to pay the invoice.
Sure, yep. All right, I think that's, that was it. Thank you, both of you.
This is a question about the mo, about the motion.
Real big.
Counselor Johnson?
If this motion passes, can we ask the administration to give us some specific updates periodically or somewhat frequently?
Yes, of course. The, uh,
Maybe even a proposal or a progress directly from the company, uh, within the first couple of months, because I
I can, I can commit to an update. I, I expect you're going to see quite a bit, but I'm happy to commit to an update or presentation, uh, one month.
Okay, thank you.
The question is whether to waive the bidding requirements and approve the agreement with MC2 Collaborative. Yes, approves both. No, uh, fails to approve both. We will proceed by roll call.
Ladine?
Yes.
Vansickel? Moffett?
Yes.
Fennessy?
No.
Elm?
Yes.
Ludwig? Herrick? Johnson? Grasky?
There are six in favor and three against. The motion carries. Thank you, counselors. That went a long time, and I'm inclined to be frustrated by it, but that was actually a very good discussion for something of a novel, uh, uh, subject that's come before. So thank you.
All right, item 10.3, Economic Development Planning and Port Director CIRC recommends the approval of a resolution to approve the execution of a development agreement, grant agreement, and lease agreements in connection with the General Mills Operation LLC projects.
Motion is by Counselor Elm, second by Counselor Fennessy, is a discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.4, Economic Development Planning and Port Director CIRC recommends approval of the Department of Army's Right of Entry for Construction Agreement as it relates to the Wisconsin Point Beach Nourishment Project.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Ludwig, is a discussion. Hearing, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. The motion carries. Do we have anybody signed up to speak? Is there anybody that wants to speak in business by public? If not, we have no further business and are adjourned. Good evening, counselors.